Time being six thirty-five, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. All members present except for Jonathan's and Larry Belcher. On the agenda, we have six thirty-five Paul Ledwell, one fifty Industrial Drive Site Plan Review. A form A by Webby Engineering. Do you know how to address?
There isn't really an address. It's Thompson Street, Pratt Street.
Okay. Minute meetings for approval, other action, other discussion is there's a complaint on Walmart deliveries. And then we have signatures for a site plan approval for three thirty Plymouth Street. And then the correspondence. We have a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll second it too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I put the one fifteen industrial drive Johnny Macaroni is tened up front. And he's requesting, well I'm requesting actually, for his use where he's not allowed to have it. Oh, to me. But here's the front of the building right here. This is Johnny Macaroni. Okay, he, last year he put an outside refrigeration unit here and one over here, apparently on the handicap. So it wasn't hard wired, he was told to remove them at the time.
And these are just portable types?
Just portable, portable types. These plug in, I believe they were one-ten.
Is it for keeping food cold or what is it?
Yeah freezer. He does it only like this time of year and then on the holidays. His busiest because the refrigerator I have inside doesn't supply enough area for him to want to have built in.
Okay.
So he just puts it there a certain time of the year. What you, you know, the fire department has a problem, I understand, fire trucks here. And then same thing over, it was a handicap, so we couldn't put it in there. Now, this is a pick-up and drop-off in front as well as a dance studio out back there. The original plan, which is this one here where I built it, had fifty parking spaces. Okay? And it's, this is the original drawing here. In the drawing that was submitted when I had the curb cut put in, at that particular time, my daughter had, had dance studio up front here. And she fenced in this area here, it showed up on the, up this drawing here.
For the kids?
It did, on Joe Webby. So that fence was taken down when they opened Caitlin's Country Kitchen because it was originally to park them out to begin with.
Yeah.
There was a gate thing right here. That gate's been, that opening, it was like a ten by something gate here. We get rid of that. So in essence, we gained an extra parking space. So now, if you count with the parking spaces here now, it is fifty-one. So my proposal, instead of him putting it over here and hard-wiring it here, I own the pole over here where it's all underground service into the building. So I was suggesting, if it was possible, and hardly anybody ever parks over here anyways. And if you can go there any given time, you're never going to see this parking lot ever full. If we could use these two parking spaces here for temporary and then put an outside service out there connected off of his meter with an outside hookup. So when he puts the two things in here for his temporary thing, he can plug in here with no cords going across this parking lot and all that other stuff.
So originally, what did we, what did we have for the use of the building?
Dance.
The whole thing?
And then up front, it was, I think it's education and I re-zoned the front to something else. I forget the zoning is now, it's like three or four. I think it's education, whatever you call restaurant, whatever you call food. Because I had opened that up back in two thousand and fourteen, I believe.
Alright, so you have nine. Did you set up for a sit-down?
No, there's no sit-down there.
Before, when was Caitlin's kitchen? It was just takeout?
Just only takeout, same as it is right now. There's no seating there whatsoever.
Okay, so you actually only needed forty-eight spaces total. It calls out forty-nine here and I-
And you said you got fifty.
Well, it was forty-nine because it was fenced in, right?
Yeah, this, this, at one point, this area right here was, there was a, like a fenced-in area.
For the kids.
Yeah, for the kids.
And what was it fenced in for, do you know?
Was it a dumpster?
Back, back, we could have put a dumpster in there, but we don't put the dumpster, the dumpsters go in here. The, it was, probably for, was for a dumpster, but I ended up putting one in there because the guy couldn't, he couldn't get the dumpster in and get it out.
Okay.
It was just too tight, so. Any event, it had fifty parking spaces. Now, my daughter had, this was all fenced in before, right here. This is part of her playground when she had the daycare out there.
That's what I was saying, that was for the kids.
Right, and then we took it all down because there's no daycare. So the fenced-in area is at the berm, all just in this area here.
Yeah.
So in essence, we gained an extra parking space by getting rid of that fenced-in area.
Yeah, as far as parking spaces, if you use two for the coolers, you'd still be above what you need. So that's not an issue. The only thing I don't know about would be if they would still allow you to have the outside electric. That's something I don't, you know-
My electrician, DJ Electric, is going to talk to the building inspector, wiring inspector.
Well, it's basically just-
Just because I don't want to give you the impression-
Yes, the same as, same as a plug on the outside of your house. Only this would be like twenty amp service, outside weather type, like the ones I have in the building.
But just so you know, if we give the approval to put them there, it would still be pending that somebody says it's okay for the outside plug-in.
Right.
I just don't want to give you the impression that if we say okay, that it's a guarantee because it still has to be put through them.
Right, I mean, whatever the electrician's going to do, he's going to talk to the inspector, so.
Cool, I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah.
Are you thinking about putting a fence or anything around it for security so that people don't come and break in and do whatever they're going to do?
The only thing that people steal over here is excavator buckets, drains in your parking lot, and steel plates.
Or they can scrap them.
And then they leave mattresses behind the conics box. It's a fair swap. They take thirty thousand, they take thirty thousand dollars worth of excavator buckets and get down the street and get two hundred and fifty dollars for junk so they can shoot it in the round.
And leave your mattresses, you're going to pay fifty bucks a piece.
And leave the mattresses they were sleeping on. Yeah, we paid you. I'm not worried about, he's not worried about that, I want to fence that in.
Okay.
He locks it, and there's people there till ten o'clock at night. And my outside lights are on.
What do, what do those things look like? Is it just like a flat freezer with a top opening lid or?
No, it's like a, no, no, it's a-
Like a walk-in?
It's like a walk-in, it's like, you know the contained conics boxes?
Yep.
You know the pack racks?
I don't know.
For people to pack their clothes and stuff.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They're like that, about that size right there.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you don't see a bunch of wires and things on the backside?
No, there's, there's one plug coming out.
Okay.
That's it. But when he had it over here, and over here, the plug-out was right here, he had wires going up over the windowsill and wires-
Yeah, it's a good point, there was no condenser hanging on the other side or anything, it's all enclosed.
Self-contained.
Yeah.
Where do you actually keep your trash here, your dumpsters?
Here's it right here, mine's right here.
And then you just cut, is it like a wheel-out kind of thing?
No, the truck comes in and gets it.
So it's up on-
He never knows where he's going to leave it either, he just-
It's like a three Yada?
Yeah.
They come in, pick it up?
They pick it up and dump it.
Okay.
And he gets his dump, I think, twice a week. He has cardboard and he has one for his, you know, food use, trash.
He keeps them like here in the island, or are they not, not on the paving?
No, right now they're on the paving, we moved them out of the way when I moved some conics boxes and there's a boat near, the boats come up, they're going back up there. And I got the, what do you call, the guys who did my striping, they forgot to put the handicap one right there. So he's supposed to be coming today, we're at the range, if not, I have a sign, I'll just put it right up here on this building. So that's my plea.
Doesn't seem like there's anything for us to do necessarily.
So as long as the electrician says it's okay, the inspector, we're good to go?
Yep.
He'll be in here following permit.
And the motion would be that we don't need to vote?
Whatever the board pleases. Just so there's something on record that he can hear, the emotions that-
Because we don't have an application, right?
No.
And it's a temporary seasonal thing, right?
Make a motion to allow two seasonal freezes in two, in two of the spaces?
Outside, you can just call them refrigeration units maybe.
Make a motion?
Because I don't always put in there a freezer or refrigerator, they're both the same size.
There's nothing to approve, I guess is the point.
We should probably get something on file, that plan and-
The use of the two parking spaces, I would say.
Do I have this plan?
Do I just draw on the plan?
You can have the plan, yes.
Is it alright if I just put a forty-eight there and then I'm going to say to allow the refrigeration units on spots forty-seven and forty-eight?
Yeah.
And then that way, we got something we can point to and-
Absolutely. And when I come in the next time, I can ask Terry, "Hey, can you go find that for me?"
Oh, she loves that stuff.
No, she don't.
Make a motion to approve the placement of two outside refrigeration units at one fifty Industrial Drive in parking spots marked number forty-seven and number forty-eight.
Should we, just as a point of clarification, should the motion be that we're actually approving something or that we don't need to technically approve it?
It could be basically a motion to waive a full-
Waive the site plan review.
With allowing-
Provided the number of spaces meets the zoning requirements as originally proposed, which it does, right?
I strike my motion?
I can make it, alright. I make a motion to waive the requirements for a site plan review for Paul Ledwell, one fifteen Industrial Drive for site plan review. Due to the fact that the proposed parking meets the zoning requirements in accordance with the original approval.
And to allow for two-
And to allow for two temporary seasonal outdoor storage containers.
Freezers?
Freezers, some sort of, whatever we want to call it. Food storage containers.
In two of the parking spaces.
In two of the fifty-two parking spaces.
One will have Marty's in it.
Mark forty-seven and forty-eight.
On a site plan prepared by Webby Engineering Associates. Dated September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We should probably put a date on this one. As modified, May sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Do we have a motion to second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay. Good deal, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
So we need to sign it even if it doesn't get approval?
If we sign it, that's the plan we talked about. Is that the form A?
No, that's the site plan.
For three thirty?
Yeah. The form A came in after I had the agenda, so I didn't know if you wanted to actually look at it, continue it.
Take a look at it.
We'll just put it on the agenda for this meeting.
Yeah, you can take a look at it.
Does that have to do with solar or is this the building?
Just a building now?
Yes. Yeah, just cutting out this piece.
Random side note, I went by and the form A for Bob Burpee, that is a beautiful couple pieces of property.
The field?
Yeah. I don't know, for some reason, once I saw it marked out, like I've always known it was there, I'm like, oh, that's a really nice piece.
I think that's the piece that Phil has, the north had the accessory.
So he's cutting out this.
Which way's the north? Yeah.
Wait, I guess. So he's cutting this piece?
Yes.
What's the original piece of property?
Okay, over, over here is where the solar field's going.
Yeah, or over there. Right, there's one here and one here.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty close because-
Yeah.
So what's the original piece of property, this, this thing? And he's carving it up into one, two, three pieces?
Should be more clear than that.
One oh seven A, B.
Yeah, the one in the middle was the one that we did a couple of years ago.
The Kennedy?
Oh, yeah. This one's, this one's Kennedy, right?
Yeah, they're right here.
Oh, that's the other house up there.
Yep. Yeah, there's, it's tucked back a little bit further from the street. So I see an A, B, and a D. Is there a C?
It is the purpose of this plan to re-divide one oh seven four zero, creating, it just says creating-
Meeting the minimums and finds for a lot in the town.
Redefine one oh seven four?
Four zero.
It looks like it's missing something, just because it says creating-
Meeting the minimum.
It seems like the-
So this was already cut out.
Yep.
So it's taken this whole piece. I think it's just one oh piece.
Yeah, it's got to be into, yeah, one into three. He's got his three circles.
Oh, yeah.
Why is there not a C? Why does it go A, B, D?
They get the lot numbers and stuff like that from the assessor's office, something must have been a C somewhere else.
Is it B?
I can't see, it looks like the distance on that bearing is covering whatever the lot is for that.
That's a one oh seven five something. All right, Charlie could come and talk to us about it.
Do you want to hold it for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not even formally on the agenda, right?
Did we figure out what C was?
Some of these aren't even really buildable, right? That one says D.
This one's pretty much like underwater.
That's what I was going to say, a lot of that's left.
Unless they're going to get in the driveway and he called it a retreat lot or whatever it may be.
Is this the high one or is this the bottom?
It's weird that it'd be right in the middle, right? You got a nice little driveway, maybe that's what it is coming through. This is really three acres, that's a big piece of land they got there, huh?
Yeah, it's a long lease from here to there.
Why not cut that one up into two lots?
This one?
This one here.
Well, this is one lot. You probably, I don't know, you only end up with, you've got to have a way to get to them.
I know, but you have frontage.
Yeah, but you can't get it here.
Hundred thousand up to-
No, I mean, turn this one lot into two lots.
Wouldn't have the up ones, I bet.
And it doesn't say how much you got, and how much you don't, assume in half of it's-
It looks like exactly forty thousand.
Says forty thousand plus, very precise. Because it looks like, yeah.
But plus is all right, plus or minus, I don't think we can deal with when you're on the exact like threshold.
So what they should have done is just taken a little extra long the way there, anyway.
I think it's all pretty close to being all of this.
All right.
When the water comes up for the river, it's pretty much up to the river.
That's all floodplain too, right? It's not just wetlands, but floodplain. Okay. What's up with Walmart? Are we doing meeting minutes? That's interesting. Is it written into their, do we need to read this into the record or anything like that? I'll read a letter into the record from Arlana Snow from the zoning board. Rob, I received a phone call today, five thirteen, two thousand and nineteen, from a Walmart employee who wished to remain anonymous. He asked what the ordinance was for delivery times as the Walmart's been receiving deliveries as early as five AM. Upon research with Terry, Walmart is only supposed to receive deliveries between eight AM and five PM. Mr. Anonymous wanted to let you know and hopes that you will contact the store. Thank you.
It's not really under the zoning enforcement officer's jurisdiction, so he sent it to them.
So was it written into their order of conditions for their site plan review or?
It's part of the site plan review, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like we should draft a letter and remind them of their conditions. It is kind of late though for deliveries, I'm surprised that they didn't allow for like a seven AM delivery.
I think it may have had something to do with the residents behind Walmart. But that's why they did it for me to, to, I don't know, I was a patron of Walmart.
Nor was I. If that's what the condition says, then that's what the condition says.
Okay, so I'll draft up a letter on your motions.
Draft up a letter to Walmart stating that according to the conditions set forth in the site plan review, oh, site plan approval, that the deliveries were supposed to be limited between five AM, uh, eight AM and five PM.
Is there a motion? I'll second if that was a motion.
I won't make the motion, but you can say that you made that motion.
I made that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion that he made.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Can't do this one.
Do you want to wait for Jonathan to do the signatures on the site plan?
Who was on there?
Well, you guys all did it.
All four of us. Well, we could sign it and then if somebody, if somebody else says it in the next time.
It's for our records anyway, so.
Oh, okay. Well, you got a stamp, sure.
I do, so you want us to know?
I'm okay with that. What do we do? Do we just use a stamp? Because I think we signed something already.
Well, you signed the letter of site plan approval.
This O'Reilly one's a bear, huh? The members present.
We do March seventh and April fourth?
Which one was, which one wasn't he?
Yeah, I think I'll fix that.
He was here.
Yes.
Because he did do some seconds.
Whatever happened with that mailbox kiosk thing? Did we ever get any formal direction on that?
Nope. The postal office did not want to come in and speak with us. And we basically advised Mr. Lebrowski to contact the post master general to find out what he needs to do. It's, it's really up to him.
Oh, that was down off of-
And I haven't heard anything since, so.
Because they're new deals for the entire subdivision, they want just the cluster of boxes at the entry?
Yeah, apparently it's for something over ten lots and his is only eight, so we don't know what the real issue is.
All right.
But that's something we can certainly get when we get new subdivisions and, you know, where he's done.
It would be nice to know what their policy is.
It would be, I think.
Are we doing, are we going to do March seventh, April fourth? We doing those two?
I am looking at, at March seventh right now. Has it been any other communications from O'Reilly's, anything either?
Did they need any other approvals? Conservation, right? Did they get their conservation approval?
Yep.
Last thing I heard, I thought they had issues with the parking reduction.
Yeah, they're still on a zoning for that, I believe. I don't know what that is, what the outcome of that is, but I don't know if they, I don't think they approved it.
Meeting I went to, they didn't. They kind of indicated they weren't going to.
Really? That seems excessive.
The next move is the-
Yeah, just trying to see the point of all that, Dave.
Well, you would be able to fit the building on there. It would be all parking.
Well, that kind of pointed to something in our bylaw where a planning board could reduce it. I guess I was one in favor, looking to come back.
Do we have a bylaw here? We've got one, right? Yeah, because zoning doesn't do every single piece of the leaf, do they? Is it only the dimensional ones?
No, pretty much true of all.
It's one sixty-seven, I'll bet, or twenty-eight, I think.
That was a nice one.
All tabbed out.
Yeah, all right.
What are we doing for the updates then for the books now? Because they're not getting printed, right?
Right, they just-
Add a sheet, take out a sheet?
Add a sheet, take out a sheet, yeah.
Should we just get a tablet?
You guys really just need designing on the subdivision, I can certainly make up some smaller.
It's not a blue book, it's like, yeah, it doesn't have any, yeah, good too. But it's almost like you might as well go to the website.
Yes.
Is that updated?
It's supposed to be updated every time there's a change.
Is that the official copy now? Is it considered? Is used after a time clerk?
Hell, if it's not official, would we be able to use it?
Right. And that's what the blue book's for. But then they cut that out.
Yeah, I remember, couldn't even get them, right? They have a publisher produce the books.
They were in a town school.
Well, maybe even if we tied up one of the computers, just have it up, you know, we came in and had it available. Might not be, if it's, if these are connected or at least have it on.
Laptop?
Yeah, or-
We'll get some money. How much we got in our budget?
Uh, what we have left right now, I'm not sure. Check into it though.
She might be able to get one for fifty bucks now too. No, just a little tablet reader thing, yeah, we don't need anything crazy.
Well, we need something to go with the projector.
I don't know, there's this subsection here, it just says, "An adequate number of spaces, actual number to be determined by the planning board on a case-by-case basis, will be required to accommodate customers, patrons, and employees at drive-in establishments, open-air retail businesses, amusements, and all other permitted uses not specifically enumerated herein." And we have a category for retail, and this is a retail business. I don't know that that loophole really exists for this particular case. It says, "Any deviation shall be by variance for-" Says any deviation shall be by variance from the zoning board.
It's to kinda cover anything outside of
Yeah, if it's not, yeah, and most of them are gonna be retail, wholesale, service establishments, office, or professional building. And this is a retail building. See, they're retail or wholesale, it's one or the other, right? Cause they got that storage room in the back.
Hmm, what's it say for wholesale?
That's the same thing. One for a hundred for retail, wholesale, or service. It's the only discrepancy would be is if you treat the back of the building as a warehouse.
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking, but it doesn't really, you know.
Well, that's how, maybe that K, that subsection K comes into place, cause we don't have a specific category for warehouse.
Could be possible. Cause I think they were providing like thirty-seven, and half of the building was retail.
Yeah, it just says for
Yeah, the total building was seventy-five hundred, so. So half of it would be thirty-six. They were supplying thirty-seven spaces, so it could, could cover it that way, but
Yeah, cause the other one said, um, minimum of five spaces, one space for two people employed, or anticipated to be employed for each two thousand square feet, for the first twenty thousand square feet of manufacturing, building, storage facilities, and other permitted uses. So this could be a storage facility, but it's not really like a self-storage facility. Alright, I find whatever that number is, if this is a, something that they need to come back and get a second special permit, I guess?
Uh, I mean, if we did something like that, we'd probably have to put a a special thing in there if there was ever a change to it, then.
Yeah, so they would have to come back and do a whole nother one? Would they be able to amend their previous one? Cause what was the site plan review last time?
Yeah.
Well, changing businesses, change the site plan. So if they were gonna do something different than what they were doing.
Well, it's the same thing, but they just need to get permission. The zoning board's not gonna grant them relief.
No, no, but I'm saying if we were to do that, they put a special condition on there that if anything changed, they
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They'd have to come back.
Yep.
So, you know, a rest of them can go in there and use it or whatever.
Agreed.
But that's up to them to come back, so.
My one's zoning granted. They just don't believe it's appropriate.
They said there was no hardship. They, they said, like, wouldn't be able to prove hardship.
The unusual topography and the wetlands and all the other usual stuff that people point to.
I think that that's just an issue of how much parking do they need and why would, would benefit it more pay?
Well, I agree with you.
Other than the fact that they could build a smaller building and make the ratio work, but anyhow. It's not before us right now.
No, it just seems like a crazy trade-off, like, oh, yeah, make the building smaller and add a pavement that nobody's gonna park in. I don't get it.
Alright, do we have any please to go over?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from March seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Alright. Who's got the official, official copy?
This one's unofficial.
Ooh, an official copy, isn't it?
Did you guys read the April fourth one also?
Yes.
May sixteen?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April fourth, two thousand nineteen.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So it's going to, you guys can do?
I think so.
The ones with Jonathan, right?
Yep.
I'll do one, I'll do a partial copy, I'll do two, I guess. Which other one did we do?
April?
Uh, April fourth, I think.
Do you have a question? So we have
I took the, um, agenda that I posted, um, with the town where I cast the bills on. I'm not really sure we can do those.
There is no
This was my first draft. Thank you.
Super exciting, right? Super exciting.
Yeah.
Our gets way better.
Well, this is April, we don't want to
Well, we, since I've been on, we haven't even gotten anything too good, like Walmart or Stop and Shop or anything.
We don't have any land down.
Especially those parking lots, right?
Is Autumn Lane a hundred percent done?
That must be new, that view?
I think the report came back that there was still some stuff to do.
I'm gonna make a motion to pay a bill to the Compton Helipass Express for public hearing ads invoice number one zero five six six in the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars.
The motion is second?
Uh, just a quick question, what was that for?
For the public hearing ads in the newspaper.
And we get, we're getting that money back from the applicants, right?
No, we are the applicants.
For what?
It's only changes.
Oh, okay. Sure. I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is that a separate, separate thing than, uh, the town warrant that went out?
Yeah, it has to go in the paper.
Yeah, so this is like an expense we can't get around.
That's budgeted in every year for any type of notices that we have to
So that was the change for the multifamily thing?
Yeah, there were seven, eight articles.
Related to the zoning?
Yeah.
What happened with that discussion? Did that happen last week? We didn't get quorum for that?
I showed up, I showed up Thursday and then I knew it was a slim chance, but I just put one on for Monday, just in hopes that we could get it, cause I thought the point was like get it before the town meeting. But like, I didn't have a chance to contact anybody, so it was just kinda like a best effort.
Yep.
Hope somebody is and shows up, but we weren't able to make it, so I believe they're gonna try to have a special town meeting sometime in September.
Also good, that didn't make it.
Since the, the planning board would have to make a recommendation in order for it to be ignored at a town meeting.
Ah.
Why couldn't we?
We have to hold a hearing.
We couldn't have just done it at today's?
Yeah, well, this town meeting was
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And we couldn't have done it the previous week? Or we just didn't have the article in front of us, or the modified change?
No, so, alright, so let's see, let me see if I can figure this out. We, on April eighteenth, we decided to not hold a meeting on the second and have it on the ninth, because the town
It was already published.
Oh, it was already published, well, alright.
It was already published before we had our meeting.
So the date was, the date of the third was set prior to our meeting on the eighteenth?
No, the ninth.
Which was the ninth, which was last week. This is today. So the date of the ninth was already set to hear that one?
Alright. I mean, basically, the selectman didn't really send it to us, give us enough time to even discuss it.
I thought it was poorly worded to begin with.
Hold on, so that's how that works as far as the date for the third? Cause I was wondering
No, the ninth.
Whoop, okay, the date for the ninth.
Was the intent of that to allow an unlimited number of multifamily units?
I have no idea.
Whatever size parcel you want, as long as it's in one building?
Have no idea. Supposedly Charlie wrote it. I don't know why. I can tell you that I was appointed to the bylaw study committee, he was, and we got a memo not to touch the multifamily. And then
Showed it.
I saw that and I went down to him and I said, what the hell's going on? You tell the bylaw study committee not to touch the multifamily, but now this comes up and this other stuff, and he said, well, you guys aren't gonna act, somebody's gonna do it. Okay? So I suggest that we put it on our agenda for the next meeting and we write some changes.
Sure.
I'm on board with that. Because, um, I don't think the bylaw changes should be happening in the back room. I think they should be out in the open, everybody should see it and have some discussion, why are we doing it? What, what is there here that we're trying to accomplish?
Yep, what's the intent?
Because when I read that, I don't know what the intent was.
Yeah.
And there was no open meetings on that.
But it's also not going forward because we didn't have an open meeting, so.
And typically, what happens when you have an open meeting is people have input.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So that one will, was not part of the town meeting?
No, none of the zoning changes made it to the town meeting.
Okay.
But I would suggest that we put on our next agenda, the bylaws, and we take a look at bylaws and make some changes.
Yeah, but I, I think the source of a request for a change
Yeah, it could come from wherever.
Shouldn't matter, right? Like, if it came from the town, if it came from a, a regular person.
But if it comes from a regular person, they have to have ten people sign that petition before it can be entered in. So if it's from one person
So, so it's a, it's actually different criteria, so if the town could do it with no backing, but an individual would need ten people?
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't seem, doesn't seem right.
My assumption would be that there'd be at least ten people in the town probably supporting it, but
My only comment was that we should be open to them, no matter like who they come from, you know what I mean? It doesn't matter who walks through the door, somebody's gotta change.
Well, one of the changes came from a petition.
Yeah, that was, that was the business zoning for the marijuana, right? I'd be happy to talk about all those if you want to do that at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can keep it on the agenda because
Continuously?
Continuously, we can be taking a look at all of them. I mean, what, one of the things we're looking at right now is parking, and that's something we probably should open the door to as well.
Do we have the ability to make it a special permit part of the site plan review to grant relief for parking as as needed, as opposed to requiring you had to go to the zoning board?
Parking should be based off of square footage. It, it's an arbitrary thing and it has nothing to do with like traffic flow or required parking. It's
It should, but it should be based in reality instead of this
That's what I'm saying, just, just because of how big a building is, we know that some of those buildings will only have two people in them. Some of these specialties
Well, it's like Walmart, it's a hundred thousand square foot building, there's a thousand spaces over there.
A thousand, enough that on a Friday, which we think would be busy, they have car shows in the parking lot and they still function.
Yep.
And they probably still have three hundred outback.
But the ones outback are never used.
That's what I mean, even with a, a car show
Even Christmas time.
And a Friday night business.
Christmas time, the busiest time.
I, I think that's something that we should be able to look at and say, hey, next time
Because what's happening is you got all that pavement, all that space is taken, and why couldn't it be green space?
That's what I'm saying, pavement is like the worst thing to put down.
So I've seen it in other cities and towns where the planning board has special permit site plan review authority to be able to make modifications to site plan and parking-related aspects of developments as opposed to dimensional and building density requirements.
Well, I mean, it's something that we can propose, but, you know, I'd be willing to do that, and my, my whole thing is, is, you know, we're gonna do it in an open meeting and we're gonna welcome anybody's input
Yep.
from the public. You know, so we can take a look at it and then we can post that these are the things we're looking at, so we can get some input.
Good.
Question. So if there's a memo out that you can't talk about some of those changes, then how, how would, how would that happen if cause isn't the memos, if the memo's still in place? I'm just asking, cause you guys mentioned that a minute ago, I've never heard of that.
I don't know, we'll investigate that.
I can't imagine we wouldn't be allowed to talk about a potential zoning change.
Exactly.
Yes, you just put it on the agenda, it's, you should, if it's on the agenda, it's open for discussion. Anything theoretically is open for discussion if it comes up.
Alright. But if we put it on our agenda, then the public is on notice that these are things that we will be considering.
Agreed.
Anything else other than parking?
The multifamily one, I think that one's a mess right now, that one probably
I, I would say, um
Do you wanna handle them like one meeting at a time, so you're not trying to get a whole bunch?
I would say for the next meeting, I would just say, uh, bylaws in general, and then we can you know, get it down and then we'll, we'll post a specific.
And then what, as we come to conclusion on each one, we can make a specific recommendation, and then what, queue them up almost like airplanes coming down on a runway, so they're ready to go for town meeting?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. Be willing to do that. And, you know, again, as the planning board, we welcome all comments from the public, and if anybody has anything to bring forward that they'd like to talk about, we're here for them.
Did you see this?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to pay a bill to Merrill Associates, invoice number seven two two seven, for the inspection and report to planning for Autumn Lane in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So a motion is a second?
Second. All in favor? Alright.
Anything coming up for zoning and stuff? In town? You get out time? Right?
No, actually, um, it's the usual stuff in law.
Has there anything happened with that forty B that you got the notice about that's going through DHCD?
That's all we, that's all I know.
There hasn't been an official submission to the town yet? It's still in DHCD review?
Yeah, it's still in review.
Okay.
It'll go to zoning.
But they haven't made the town submission yet?
Can we, um, send something over to the zoning that we'd like to be included, um, when they get that?
I think we'll get copies of all that stuff, wouldn't we normally?
Well, what's happened in the past is the, the zoning kinda takes, uh,
Yeah, cause they're the
As we get over.
Yeah, we get an advisory role on that, right? But they're the actual decision-making board.
And what they've done before in the past was invited us to be part of the meeting, so
Mm-hmm.
Just to let them know that we would be more than willing to participate. An old colony did, um, the study for one oh six.
You see they're fixing that intersection?
The I don't know if they call that fixing.
They're modifying the intersection. I haven't seen how the finished one worked out.
One oh
So they made it a one-way coming down. If you're coming eastbound on one oh six, right, and you wanna turn right, they made that a one-way instead of a four-way, right? So if you wanna go across the street coming up to one oh six, then you have to make that kinda sharper turn to be able to make a left. You can't just kinda go diagonally across the road now.
You talking Eastbridge Road?
Yeah.
Right at Johnny Macaroni's.
Yeah, right at that Johnny Macaroni's intersection.
Did you see where the curb is?
I actually haven't been down there since I finished. I was there the day they were cutting the pavement and getting it ready.
The curb is out to the travel line of one oh six.
Slowed people down.
Yeah, that thing's been messed up forever, alright? I remember two or three
It's out in the travel lane, not, not at the
I can't believe it's actually out in the travel lane, but it's probably right up against it.
Out, out beyond the white line.
That doesn't make any sense.
Not the gutter line.
The travel line.
Yeah, the last time I actually went through there, there was a car that was coming from, what, is it Washington? Which would go behind.
Yep.
So he came out as if he was taking the right and then took the left around the people who were in the correct place to take a left, but couldn't go because of traffic. And then the car just goes around to the right and around, and it's like, I don't know, three or four cars, all And then the car just goes around to the right and around. It was like, I don't know, three or four cars, all stupid angles and stopping, and it was like, I don't know.
Yeah, so depending on which way the traffic and the gap in the traffic is coming, you could always kind of get out first if it was coming either eastbound or westbound. Because that was a weird intersection.
Okay, anything else?
Do you have anything to add here? Or you just watching today?
It's like my head in the game, so I know what's happening.
All right.
Yeah, it's a good idea even just to see, like, everything go through the motions. Because there's a lot of like the technical stuff that takes a while, like the, um, even the, I made a motion, wait for him, wait for him, who seconds?
Yeah, I even tried to come on Monday, but I was late for work, so.
Okay, so we did, uh, we're gonna do the letter to zoning. You wanna take care of signatures? Okay. Any other motions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All.
Aye.